I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular medium council, Monday, January 13th, 2020, first meeting of 2020. Happy New Year to everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Is there any announcements at this time? Was that a couple of minutes before 6:30 or came here right on time?
Send them right away.
Okay, any announcements at this time? Here and then we'll move down approval of the agenda. Motion, please, Council Phil Chuck.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda for Monday, January 13th, 2020.
Do we have a second here, Council Schramm? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Moving down for approval of the minutes, we have before us the committee of the whole and the regular media council. Council Peterson?
I'd like to make the motion that the minutes for the December 9th, 2019 Committee of the Hall meeting and the December 16th, 2019 regular meeting of council meeting be approved as read.
Do we have a second here? Council Beck, is there any discussion there? It does seem like a long time ago already, doesn't it? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Moving down administration reports, we have acting city manager Tote with a cold.
Thank you, Mayor Spence, members of council. Just one item on my report for discussion tonight, and that's regarding the RFP procurement process for engineering services for the Lagoon expansion. So the city's process to find an engineering company to complete the design and project management of the Lagoon project has completed after being advertised for three consecutive weeks. The competition closed on December 6th, 2019 with six firms bidding on the project. The proposals were viewed against this matrix city administration along with Colliers created for the project during the RFP creation process. Colliers completed the formal review and recommendation process in order to keep city administration at an arm's length during the procurement process. The three companies which scored the highest are AECOM, WSP, and Associated Engineering. Although price was an important component to the submissions, we had scored local experience and the methodology higher in terms of points, as we wanted to ensure we were not obligated to take the lowest prices, that is not always the best. AECOM's bid price of $866,000 is well below our anticipated 10% of the total project cost we had estimated. I've included a copy of the initial package from Colliers as appendix A, as well as an addendum to their initial review with some rationale based on some additional information we asked from the top three proponents as appendix B. I think the big thing that Bob and I were looking at pointing out to council tonight is it is a significant project. Obviously, there's a lot of dollars behind this contract, and we, because it's being funded by different levels of government, we wanted to ensure kind of an open and transparent process through the procurement process, and that is why we hired Colliers to kind of project manage that so we could be at an arm's length and be kind of as transparent as possible through the process. So the recommendation before you is that we award the contract for engineering services for the Lagoon improvements to AECOM.
Okay, so we have a motion in front of us. Who would like to make that motion? Council Phil Chuck?
I'd like to make the motion to award the contract for the engineering for the City of Warman Sewerage Lagoon project to AECOM based on the procurement process and subsequent matrix at a cost of $866,000, including disbursements plus applicable taxes.
Do we have a second here, Council Schramm? Can we open the floor to comments now? Is there any? Council Beck?
So obviously, when the document was first circulated in mid-December there, with some of the comments and the questions that came up from there, we got some new information. And one of the big items, obviously, did certainly affect the price, and Colliers ended up revising basically $167,000 worth of project costs. So obviously, that kind of changed like a lot of the discussion and obviously my current position on the, you know, like on the recommendation brought forward. So I guess my question is, with this year, how did they miss that? Because that's a sizable chunk of money. And there again, they're the ones that are going to be managing this project, you know, that kind of in terms of making sure all the procurement's done and whatnot. What security do we have that they're not going to make another $167,000 more mistake?
I wouldn't call it a mistake in terms of the revision to the number was more based on the additional information. When they looked at the hours that each firm had allocated to the project and the different phases of the projects, they saw some inconsistencies, I guess, in terms of the number of hours that WSP had allocated to the project. Therefore, they went back to all three to ask, you know, you've given us your breakdown of hours, do you feel like you've included kind of a, I guess I'd call it, a bit of a buffer in terms of hours that you've provided, and are you confident that you can meet the project requirements in those hours? And at that time, WSP agreed that their hours are probably a little low in terms of what they had provided, and that's where they said that the extra hours based on the hourly rate, daily kind of work amount should be, or would be fair, I guess, to add to the total cost of the project.
So to build on that, you know, with this year, I mean, obviously, with this year, when they did look at the projects, you know, to make sure that the projects are all, let's say, rated fairly and that kind of thing, it was still something that was overlooked at that time. So I will agree with you, and you know, I don't feel that was necessarily a mistake on their part, but with this year, certainly information that was either withheld, overlooked, or whatever, and there again, that does significantly change my position and a lot of the points that I ended up bringing forward.
Right.
So, you know, with this year, you know, like I guess, with this year, I guess I'm asking you as our planner, you know, that kind of whatever, what protections do we have as a city that there aren't going to be further, you know, miscalculations or overlooked in the future?
Well, I think the plan is moving forward with Colliers, not in terms of a full project management on the project. If the contract's awarded to AECOM tonight, there's a certain level of confidence that certain areas where we might have used Colliers if another firm had been selected, i.e. in the reporting structure, in some of the reporting that we're going to have to do to both the province and federal governments in terms of the amount of money that's being spent and spent, sorry, and all of that kind of stuff, could be probably handled by AECOM. I think where Bob and my heads at with using Colliers moving forward is that it would be on kind of a needs basis. So for example, with the reservoir, we had certain situations where the engineer would come back and say, you know, the contractors come to us and said, if you go back to route with, say, I'm just using this as an example, a different valve, it may cost you a little more upfront, but it might save you money down the line. What we're looking at perhaps using Colliers for through this process would be that kind of third pair of eyes with the expertise to say, look, this is what the engineer is recommending based on what the contractor's saying, do you agree that that would be a benefit to the city or spending that extra money upfront would be useful to the city? In addition, you know, we were fully prepared if another one of the engineering companies would have come forward in terms of, in terms of being the highest scorer in points, we were totally, you know, we were going to obviously go with that company. We do see some benefits, though, in terms of it being AECOM, because even if we went with another company, there's certain background information, you know, materials that we would need to get from AECOM. So I guess what my point I'm trying to make is that there would still be a bit of a cost with AECOM through the project, since they are kind of considered our city engineer. So from an administration perspective, I think, you know, we see the value, yes, there is a price difference, and obviously, price is always important, and we want to make sure we're getting good value for our money, but we do feel that the difference in price and what we will save in terms of some of that background collection information, et cetera, with AECOM is kind of worth that difference. And just one more point I'll add is, in terms of AECOM moving forward, we also feel some confidence in terms of them having a good background knowledge with our infrastructure. So if, say, when we go to do the procurement for the actual construction of the works and we get very good pricing back, that there may be some options to add in, you know, add in some different, I guess, bonuses or pluses in terms of different works to the Lagoon and the storm water management system, which we may not get with another engineer who doesn't have the same, I guess, background of knowledge.
Very fair comments, Council Beck. Council Schramm?
Go ahead. Those other costs that you talked about, that AECOM being our engineer, I guess, how do you, Howard, how does the administration want to deal with? Because to me, it's like you still have, even if they are our engineer, those costs are still, regardless who we pick, would be still extra, right? So how would, how does administration look at, if AECOM was selected tonight, how do you keep track of the extra costs that are not involved in the contract?
So in terms of the bid price that they've given us, it's kind of $866 inclusive. So if there was ever going to be any additional charges for basically what we've asked them to complete, which is the project, you know, aligned within the RFP, we would have to go through a change order process. The costs associated with AECOM, you know, finding that background information, using that background information that they already have, the plans, the CAD drawings, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, I'm not thinking that that would be an extra cost with AECOM, because it's just information that they have readily available. If it was another firm, we would have to use AECOM as a bit of, I guess, the go-to person when that information's requested from the engineers from the other firm.
Is that somewhere in the contract that there is a, that information? I, I'm just asking a question, if it's double dipping in the sense of having to pay for one for city engineering and for this project, where does the line when they become clouded with each other?
I think we're fairly confident, and obviously, we haven't signed a contract yet, because this is kind of the discussion around tonight, but that contract should include all of the work that we included within the RFP for that bid price of $866.
Just a couple of points, and I guess I like the process, what happened here, too, because you got the information out to us early, there's information, questions asked and clarified along the way, because I think front look to all of us and what our first look at all of this, we were looking at the bottom line, which was the dollars. And so there is some working knowledge, though, like let's not kid ourselves, that somebody that has a working knowledge of our complete system is at an inherent advantage if they, if it makes sense. And so I think knowing that the confidence of administration and the confidence of a third party, you know, I give full support to that based on that.
Anything else, Council Peterson?
I also suspect, too, that with AECOM being in the role of the city engineering firm, if there was, if the contract was awarded to another provider, would there be some additional costs actually within our municipal contract with AECOM for them giving that feedback or giving that knowledge?
We typically, sorry.
No, that's kind of.
We typically have a general engineering contract with AECOM on an annual basis where kind of those day-to-day questions that come up, we go to AECOM, and I think we would have to look at a portion of that or either increasing that to cover some of that cost. Is it going to be significant in terms of thousands of dollars? No. Is it going to be tens of thousands of dollars? Probably.
But so there would essentially be some efficiencies, though, with?
Yes, yeah, sorry, yes, yeah, and from our opinion, definitely some efficiencies in terms of using that engineer. Like I said, though, if the procurement process would have came back and points would have been scored higher for another firm, we're fully willing to kind of work through that process, and it made sense. But in terms of the way the scoring came out in AECOM kind of being on top, for us, after reading through the proposals, we felt fairly confident in their background knowledge and the fact that they could complete it on time and budget.
Council Peterson?
Speaking to AECOM and having that local knowledge, it seems to me that as we, as Werman continues to grow and we start looking at doing more of these bigger projects where we have put out RFPs for the engineering, that we're always going to be beholden to AECOM unless we start having a plan sooner than later to bring that knowledge here, so that if we, if another firm comes along and, let's say it's 8380 again, but it's $300,000 less, I mean, at that kind of price difference for three points, I would never give it to AECOM. I, you know, but we've got to be able to have that, that knowledge here so that we aren't paying extra to AECOM in a project that they're not involved in.
For sure, and I think, you know, Bob realizes that at a certain point, we're going to reach that threshold population, and there's going to be enough work where a full-time engineer on staff probably makes sense. Even with a full-time engineer on staff, though, when you're looking at these larger projects, you're still having to consult them out, because an engineer that would work at the City of Werman in terms of their skill level and where their local knowledge might be, it may be specific to a certain area of engineering, and they would not have the knowledge to say, design a reservoir or design a Lagoon works, but you're correct, they could work through the procurement process internally and do some of that work, for sure.
Anything else, Council Beck?
Yeah, I just want to say one more thing. Certainly with Council Phil, Council Phil Chuck's comments, with this year, you know, this, you know, for me, it didn't solely come down to price. With this year, one of the things that I really liked about the, like the WSP proposal was the fact that the bio-solids expert was certainly incorporated, you know, into the project and whatnot. And that's something that, you know, that really stood out, you know, in comparison to, you know, to all five bids, you know, that was really evident to me that I thought would be really spectacular for us, because we do have bio-solids problem. So, you know, certainly this year, I just wanted to point out that it wasn't just solely price. The other point, and I think Brad, this comes back to the comments that you had made in response to, I think, Council Schramm's points, is you had said that, that AECOM's price was inclusive, so with this year, there wouldn't be any extra costs where that was different from the other ones, and I don't, and perhaps I missed it, but with this year, I don't see that, you know, specified in the documents there that we had received, you know, to certainly look through. And, sorry, so I do think that that was a relatively important point to turn, you know, like there again, to know, hey, you know, what, 230,000, whatever difference, and that's a fixed price versus any possible cost overages that there would have, would have played, you know, indefinitely beneficial in terms of my decision-making and ranking, my own internal ranking at the time. So I just wanted to point that out.
No, and I mean, definitely good comments. In terms of the other prices, they're inclusive to design the Lagoon and do everything that's within the RFP, but there's an expectation from those firms that we'll be able to provide the information that they need to do the design of the works and everything else. So they're not looking at what that extra cost for our engineer is going to be or including that within their proposal. They're just assuming however we're going to get them the information, that's our job to kind of figure out type of situation.
But I think what, what Council Beck is saying, correct me if I'm wrong, but is that, is that we should have had that information, that that was a possibility.
I think it was included in one of the emails that came back that said there was some additional cost or there was some benefit in terms of AECOM being the selected proponent for some of that extra, I guess, between, in-between type back and forth information sharings. I believe we included it in maybe the first email that went out, like the first email that went out after the first set of questions, I guess I should say.
Okay, is there anything else? Okay, motions on the floor, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you, that concludes our report.
Okay, city clerk. Mine's pretty basic. So as municipal revenue sharing grant for 2021, I just require a resolution from council that you guys, that municipality meets all the requirements that the grant is asking for, so there is a recommendation.
That's a long one, who's going to stab this one?
I will.
Okay, Council Schramm, some practicing.
That's because I use my voice all the time, I tell you.
Okay, go for it.
The council of the City of Werman confirms municipality meets the following eligibility requirements to receive the municipal revenue sharing grant. Submission of the 2018 audited financial statement to be, to the Ministry of Government Relations. Submission of the 2019 public reporting on municipal waterworks to the Ministry of Government Relations. In good standing with respect to the reporting and remittance of educational property taxes. Adoption of a council procedure bylaw. Adoption of an employee COVID conduct, and all members of council have filed and annually updated their public disclosure statements as required, and that we understand that if any requirements are not met, our municipal revenue sharing grant may be withheld until all requirements are met, and that we authorize the city clerk to sign the declaration of eligibility and submit to the Ministry of Government Relations. I salute.
Okay, do we have a second, or back? Council Beck, do we have any further discussion?
Just a quick question, is all of this done?
It is done.
Okay. So I read them all?
There is an appendix there, and everything else has been done, and I did double-check the declarations have all been signed.
Okay.
This is new, this is something that's new, right?
Uh-uh. We do this.
Did we do that?
Yeah.
Well, certainly for us, having, you know, actually having us pass the motion is actually, that is new. This is a part of the government relations, basically looking to, you know, to tighten up, you know, let's say municipalities kind of following what's in the municipalities act and also the legacies act. There's many municipalities that are certainly missing their, their public disclosures, that's a very common one, also the employee conduct and the council procedures, you know, that sort of thing. So it's just government relations, just kind of putting it out there and kind of saying, you know what, we'll look at this a little bit more closely, you know, in that kind of thing in terms of that, you know, that change to the Ministry of Government Relations.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Moving down to recreation manager.
Good evening, Mayor Spence, members of council. I bring to you my report tonight, where we require one action, action item out of a report, and that is a resolution of support principle and financial commitment for the Legends Center Arena Expansion Project. Resolution required is part of the application process for the second intake of the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Plan, so I'm looking for a recommendation to make or resolution to make, sorry.
Okay, Council Tule?
I'll make the motion for city council to authorize administration to move forward with the application for funding through the new Investing in Canada Infrastructure Plan for the Legends Center Arena Expansion Project, which will include an official-sized ice surface, spectator seating, spectator lounge, dressing rooms, storage, and mechanical rooms, to be attached to the existing Legends Center multipurpose facility at an approximate cost of $7.84 million plus applicable taxes.
Do we have a second of that? Council Phil Chuck? Any further questions here or comments? Council Peterson?
So we've got here the approximate cost of $7.84. And as we've seen in some of these large projects, sometime, if it comes back at, let's say, the lowest bid that's recommended is 8.4 million, how does that, are we on the hook for that $600,000 difference?
Yes. So the number, the number that we got with the 7.84 is we've worked with a construction company, the best we can. We worked with AODBT to put together a plan, and they have worked with a construction company to get as close as they possibly can to the 7.84. And we've always said that the project was going to cost in around that 8.2 to 8.3, and we had those services of AODBT within that, and unfortunately, the design process has already taken place and is completed, and the cost of that cannot be included in, because it's work that's already done before the grant has been approved. So we backed those service costs out, and that's how we get to the 7.84 million plus taxes. If it comes higher, it comes higher, if it comes lower, it comes lower. We've worked with, it was quite a process to try to figure out exactly what that cost was going to be, so that we could go through this process.
And is, is having that, that cost figured out as close as possible, does that positively affect the, the application, or does it really affect, like, I mean, if we were to, say, put in the application at 8.2 million, does that change how the application's looked at, or do we know?
Not at all. I can't answer that. I think the project itself is, I think you try to get as close as you possibly can to what your costs are going to be, and we go forth from that. Yeah, we've worked with, like I said, this construction company with AODBT's assistance, and we've tried to get that as close to the actual cost that we could have.
Okay.
And the market, by the time you go to tender, it could be a very dry market where you're getting eight, nine, 10 bids on it, or you might only get one bid on it, but I think the construction market right now is in favor of the project and moving forward.
Council Phil Chuck?
Just to add to that a little bit, and this is also an opportunity, I think Council Jones mentioned that in the past, about what can we do? This, knowing, talking to the previous municipal affairs minister, a lot of, a lot of, well, decision will be on Jim Mikowski's, our Minister Mikowski's desk, so I get opportunities to talk to him at SUMA or other places, or if you know him, it's worth a call to get it, why Werman? Like, why, why our project? Because considering the original Legends project was overlooked on, on the majority on Building Canada, there's a really good argument to why Werman. So I think it's just, when you get those opportunities, you got to do it. Him and Lori Carr would probably be two key, key people.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor? Thank you, Paul. Motion to file administration reports? Council Jones?
Oh, I'm sorry. Someone's going to second this. Okay, for, where are we? Motion to administration force for Monday, January 13th, 2020 are approved by council and are filed as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'd like to second that.
Thank you, Council Beck. Any discussion there?
I'll get to it right now.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Moving down to council reports, we will start with the mayor's report. For your information, we do have two resolutions on there, let me get to it. Okay, first resolution is Counselor, or Counselor Schramm, sorry.
I move to authorize the purchase of 50 Rush tickets as a City of Werman promotion for the Rush or the Home Towns showcase game on January the 18th, 2020, at a cost of
Council Phil Chuck? Any discussion there? All in favor? Okay, second motion. Council Peterson? That's, that's incorrect, actually. I think we've sent a message around that should read Schramm and Beck.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to approve the attendance of two councillors, Council Beck and Council Schramm, to the FCM Annual Conference in Toronto, Ontario on June 3rd to 8th, 2020.
I wonder if I should have my name in there? Would you, too? Yeah. And mayor. And mayor. I just didn't, I didn't really think about.
Oh, would you like an amendment?
Yeah, I'd, we'd have to make an amendment for that.
So I'd like to, no, I'll put forward the amendment to include Mayor Sheriff Spence to accompany the two aforementioned councils.
Okay, does everyone agree on the amendment? Okay, any discussion, or second or first on the motion? Council Phil Chuck? Is there any conversation around that? Okay, all in favor? Is there any questions in my report, as you see it there in front of you? Yes.
Yes, so you've mentioned that you're going to be meeting with three MPs from our area. You had one scheduled with Kelly Block already. I was wondering, have you scheduled the other two? Do you know what the timeline would be?
I've already actually met with Counselor, I'm with MP Block, MP Redicop, and then MP Videl, which will be next Monday, so.
Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. Anything else? Okay, moving on to our, oh, let's see, do we have anything under our, I guess, because school's, school was out, we don't have any report from you? Okay, so we do have other councillor reports, too, which are Counselor Beck's SWNA, NA Waste Meeting. Does anyone have any questions to that report?
I just have, there's a bit of a mention with the single use, we're hearing a lot from the federal standpoint, this is coming. Obviously, it's one of those things that will have major impact on how things are done. What was the discussion there? What's the, what's the preparation, I guess, and what do we need to be aware of sort of moving in as far as the timelines, or is that information available at this point?
Yeah, so certainly, like a lot of the, like the discussion actually revolved around what, what Europe is doing, you know, right now, and, you know, like they're certainly miles ahead of where we are, so like we're just kind of starting about, you know, let's say, having that discussion as to what single-use plastics, you know, can be eliminated and things like that. And actually, right now, the ball's really in the hands of the, of the federal government in terms of deciding what actually turns as single-use, you know, that they're trying to identify, you know, in that kind of thing. Does plastic bags, you know, you know, meet that? Obviously, straws, you know, they've, they've certainly had like a lot of attention around that, but what else goes into that? Paper plates and, you know, things like that, you know, uh, or like the plastic forks and spoons that go with that. Are, like, are those, you know?
So that list is not there yet?
So, yeah, so there's a lot of classifications that they're kind of working through on that, whatever, what the timeline is on that, I don't know. But, yeah, with this year, you know, um, you know, like, there's a lot of discussion about, um, how Europe has been able to, you know, uh, basically have their population kind of reduce, you know, from, let's say, one hundred, let's say, shopping bags, let's say, used per year, um, you know, let's say, per person, and now they're down to, let's say, about twenty or so. So, um, yeah, uh, one of the other things to kind of highlight along that is, um, there's two communities, um, you know, here in Saskatchewan that are, um, certainly having the discussion about putting in a plastic bag ban. So this year, um, one of the communities did attend the meeting, and that was, uh, that was Outlook and whatnot. So they, they are talking about actually introducing one here in January, how far that, that might actually be along, that, that they don't know. I asked them to kind of keep me informed. And when I was at, um, the, uh, SUMA Board Meeting in, uh, November, uh, it was pointed out that Prince Albert is actually looking at that also in Wurman. So I figured, well, with this year, you know, so I've asked, um, you know, like, the Prince Albert representative, uh, to the SUMA Board, uh, to certainly keep me informed as to how that goes and what the process is, um, just in case it is something, you know, that we'd be looking to, you know, implement that, you know, we can see, like, the trials and errors, you know, kind of going on in there.
So I, I, I had the impression it wasn't gonna be grassroots, that it's more coming from the federal, this is now the new regulation, make it work.
That's, that's probably how it's gonna go, you know, technically. Though with this year, I mean, certainly in terms of plastic bags, we've had a few communities kind of suggest, let's, like, an interest in there. Uh, there again, that would be superseding any, you know, that the federal government would actually look to, you know, to actually.
They'll probably start doing it before they're told to. Like, Outlook has always been really good stewards as long back, as long as back as I can remember.
They kind of market themselves as a good community.
Yeah, they, they really have, so they've been, I could see them doing that.
Okay.
Counsel Schramm?
Um, has there been any talk about the, the financial end of things? I mean, we, we talked about single-use plastics, but, uh, Reverend Mr. Rose, if it comes from the feds and comes on down, we are the ones that have to put that into practice. And what's the cost to that? I mean, it's one thing to say to get rid of it, but we, we do need to be understanding what the cost of that to our community would be. And was there any talk on that financial aspect?
Love your question. Well, this year, top of page two of, of my thing, you'll see a question mark, and then it says, what calls of, of education program collection? Municipalities would still have the responsibility to deal with those items through landfill or, you know, waiting on provincial calls, you know, policy for clarity, um, like, basically on those items. That was actually a question that I had put forward, basically saying, you know what, um, with, with the stewards out there and whatnot. Like, any, any, um, gap of education or program delivery and whatnot really falls on municipalities in terms of dealing with, let's say, with the follow-up. So I guess I was primarily, um, looking at, you know, the fact that household hazard is wasteful for us, for example, and that, whenever, there again, when you look at costs, I think the cost, uh, it's past year was, you know, close to that forty thousand, forty-five thousand dollars. Um, but this year, that's something that, you know, our municipality, you know, you know, basically has to cover the shortfall on. Um, so obviously, with this year, I'm, I'm kind of looking for a stopgap so that where they're, that cost to our municipalities or municipalities like us that are certainly taking those responsibilities have, have some mechanism of, of kind of covering their costs. So, yes, with this year, just so you know, that was something that was not talked about there, um, and, you know, something there that I brought up. I, um, will have to say that the response back was, nobody's looking at that. So with this year, that is a very important item to kind of carry forward. So there again, anytime that we see anybody from, you know, the Ministry of, of Environment and on the provincial side of things, there again, I think we need to hammer home, like the, you know, the fact that municipalities are really that stopgap, you know, mechanism in terms of, of anything that, you know, that the stewards, um, fail to implement or fail to educate the public on.
Just for your information, because I found out just yesterday, our MP Redicop is on the Environmental Committee. And, uh, so to me, being our environmental person, being in contact with him and getting that favorable level, uh, I think would be beneficial to support or to promote the financial cost of things federally.
Especially because he's so new.
Mm-hmm. For sure. Yeah, uh, you know, certainly, now, Mr. Redicop, I haven't, you know, personally not gonna get there's a chance to, you know, to set something up in that coming, but I'm sort of look forward to that.
Just call his office. Just call his office, I'll set up something. Okay, any other questions there?
No.
Okay, moving down to Counsel Philchuck's, uh, PRRC meeting, um, that's in front of us. I, I do want to mention, I don't know, I'm sure that Gary will can talk to us more, but I did want to, it's also my report, is the declaration signing? That is coming up quickly, it's quite a big affair, and so I, we will need to know who from council plans to be there, and, uh, and I guess, well, I'll be the signer from, from Wurman, but who, does anyone at the current time know that they'd like to be there? Cause we do need to let them know by Chan, January twenty-third, who plans to be there.
It's a Thursday after SUMA.
Yeah.
So Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, it's a Thursday morning at nine AM at One Arrow. So, so about a forty-minute drive.
So this is February sixth, if you remember me?
So if you plan to be there, if you could let, uh, let us know, I guess, let myself know, um, by the end of the week, so we can let them know. And if I don't hear from anybody by the end of the week, it'll just, Gary, you plan to be there, so Gary and I will be representing for sure, but if there's anyone else that I can know by Friday, so I can pass that on. Is there any questions of, uh, I was not at this meeting, so is there any questions of Gary on this report? Counsel Beck?
Yeah, so, um, looks like there's a move to go from quarterly meetings to monthly meetings now?
It's always been monthly.
Oh, has it always been month? Uh, well, this year, I, um, like, I thought that was a new development, when I had read it.
No.
But, no?
Always been monthly.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, we need a motion to file our reports. Counsel Beck?
Yes, so they have to make a motion to file mayor's and council's reports as presented.
Secondary for that, Counsel Schramm? All in favor? Thank you, moving down to correspondence. Did I miss something? Oh, I'm sorry. Let's start with Counsel Philchuck this time.
Sure, I, very little, actually. First of all, agree with Mayor Spence, with her talking about the weather, what a terrific time to be around Wurman, that, uh, I was lucky not to book anything this year, so it was, it was nice, great weather, nice to be outside, good energy. It's freezing up a little bit right now, mind you, but, uh, during the winter break was very nice. Um, I think, I just wanted to mention about, uh, one thing with Wurman High School, what I'm seeing, starting to see growth again, starting to see with, uh, new students coming. It, it, that is somewhat common at Wurman High with the second semester, but we're seeing numbers go up again, uh, coming for next semester. I think we've had about fifteen students in the last two weeks here. So from different provinces, so it does mean that they're moving here for reasons, and , uh, we, you know, thank you for the advertising that's happening out there, and also, uh, the things that are happening within Wurman that are making Wurman the choice. So it's always interesting meeting the new people coming to Wurman and talking why the choice, and, and very positive when they're coming to Wurman, very excited about moving here. So just wanted to mention that, seeing that front line of people coming to Wurman, excited to be here.
Counsel Schramm?
Uh, I don't have much, just was involved at the video shoot, uh, with my two other cohorts, um, uh, Counsel Philchuck and Counsel Beck, and, uh, it was, uh, now I have a, a bit of appreciation to the fine arts of movie, of being an actor in a movie and learning the line. And, uh, so it was, it was good, I look forward to seeing it in person at the Rush Game. Uh, other than that, I don't have much, I, and, uh, yeah, that's all I have.
Counsel Peterson?
Nothing much, uh, this time?
Is there anything that you wanted to, to bring up to know? Hmm, no. Okay. Counsel Tully?
Don't really have anything to update this time.
Counsel. Okay, all the way, Counsel Beck?
All right, well, uh, certainly, I am looking forward to, uh, to the Rush Game coming up here, um, you know, this Saturday, obviously, it is featuring Wurman. And, yes, it was certainly good to, uh, you know, to certainly work on that video in that coming. I'm, like, I'm sure that we could've got it all done in one, but I think that they insisted on, on having it broken up. Um, and also this year, uh, SUMA, uh, does take place from February second to fifth, uh, plus anybody going to the MLDP programs in that kind of thing, I think we have two counselors registered for that, so, you know, definitely be looking forward to seeing Wurman down there in Regina, and, uh, it's gonna be another fantastic event.
And hopefully we get the cold weather done with now, so it's not cold then.
SUMA is still guaranteed to be the coldest week of the year.
Well, they moved it to, isn't it moved a few days or a couple days or?
It's still that first weekend in February, um, Super Bowl and that kind of thing, so, and, uh, I think we'll be able to celebrate a birthday down there also, so.
Unfortunately, he won't be able to wear his favorite sweater at the Super Bowl.
Well, he'll probably still wear it, but it's just that he won't, he won't have anybody actually cheer for him at the game.
Okay, so, moving down to correspondence, uh, we have Hudson Bay Route Association twenty twenty membership, we have our CNP media releases from December ninth, two thousand nineteen, I don't like that sound, January sixth, twenty twenty, and FCM membership renewal letter and invoices. So, Counsel Schramm?
I just, I, you, you want my question about the FCM thing?
Sure.
I'd love to have an update for that. Get a motion. You want the motion first?
We'll get the motion first, and then we'll go.
Okay. Um, I move that, uh, the City of Wurman, do you want me to do both or just one?
Just the one motion.
Okay, to renew the City of Wurman membership with Federation of Canadian Municipalities FCM for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one year at the cost of two thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Secondary? Counsel Peterson? And questions?
Just like an update from my question from last.
I wasn't here. It was, it's, it was about the, about the travel fund, which explained to me.
So, the travel fund, I actually called FCM when I got this, asking if there was gonna be a second invoice coming to us. And they have restructured their payment, that they are not doing that anymore. So every province had something a little bit different that they would be billed second, like, to get a second billing for, and in Saskatchewan, it was the travel fund. It is now included in this, so there will not be a second item coming to us regarding the travel fund, it's all built in now.
Okay, cause there was also clarity with SUMA, right?
Yeah, so with this year, um, obviously, when I had seen this, because, uh, this, this did actually come back to us in, uh, November, you know, in that kind of thing, and I think it was at the several meeting that it was kind of, you know, kind of put forward. Um, but, you know, certainly with this year, uh, SUMA is still, to me, and I, and I didn't check on it today, you know, in that kind of, whatever, um, that it is still an independent bill, you know, in that kind of thing, so I, uh, so, obviously, like, you know, like, you know, um, I'm not sure where, you know, like, who kind of gave that, you know, that, that guarantee that this is included in there, but with this year, my sources are still telling me that it is, it is not, you know, because obviously, it's something that, that SUMA, we were kind of advocating for, you know, you know, for it to be all included in one, and they reported that they can't do it because it was a auditor's, um, notation in terms of how the new auditing standards are in. And the reason why it was a, why it was an auditing standard that's, that's outside of their parameters is because it's money that, that FCM would have collected, but then with this year, they wouldn't have any authority or any, um, you know, delegation of that money, so therefore, that's where the auditor said that that's supposed to be out of scope, and therefore, they're not supposed to collect. So, so that's, that's where the issue came from. I don't believe that it's been resolved, and, and there again, I'm not disputing that, that this is the information that, that we as Wurman, you know, administration, you know, did receive. Yeah, with this year, I'm still told that it's, it's one of those things where the travel fund, I think we should still expect that that bill is gonna be served.
I think that from where FCM is concerned, it's resolved, they're not going to be sending another one out, but maybe another one will come from the SUMA.
Yeah, so, well, cause like, like, there again, like, in order to have your representatives covered, you know, person, participating municipalities must contribute to that, otherwise you can't, you can't access that fund. So whether, whether or not at that point there it's voluntary or considered voluntary, and therefore not an actual invoice, could very well be, but with this year, you know, it is, it is one of those things that we will have to definitely make sure that, you know, that we do qualify for, because obviously, it's in our best interest for that, and still, you know, like, a bill or an amount that we are prepared to pay, um, for having our representative.
I'm, my, my questions are only to bring clarity, not to check blood.
Well, I think SUMA and FCM have, have been talking about this for some time and hoping to come to some sort of agreement, but FCM doesn't collect from other provinces, and they do not, I, collecting and, uh, reimburse back, and so they don't want to be doing it, and that's why they made, they, this is their stand, they will not be doing it. So probably what's gonna end up happening, SUMA's probably gonna have to collect, which is disadvantage for SUMA, for sure, and they didn't want to have to go there, but that might be what happens, so. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of that motion? Next motion to file correspondence. Counsel Philchuck?
I'll make the motion to file the correspondence that was received by council, the Hudson Bay Route Membership Request, our CNP Media Releases, December ninth to ni, twenty nineteen to January sixth, twenty twenty, and the FCM Renewal Letter and Invoice.
Do we have a secondary for that? Counsel Schramm? I know we have a request there, I don't know if anyone wanted to discuss that, discuss that request from Hudson Bay Route Membership Request, file as correspondence.
I'm happy to file that as correspondence.
No one feels the same? Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Other reports? Turbidity Report. Motion, please. Counsel Peterson?
I'd like to make the motion that December twenty nineteen, Turbidity Report is approved by council and filed.
Secondary? Counsel Jones? Any questions there?
Yes.
Counsel Schramm?
I would like to go back to the, the highlight, the little highlighted ones, just so that I, we're aware of what's the high number and what's the low number, just.
Um, just so you know, with this here, it is actually indicated on there, but it's not in yellow, there's actually a little gray dot.
Yeah, it's not as prevalent, for sure.
So, and just so you know, I had to look really, really close to see that. And, and with that, I would actually like to, uh, to make amendment to the report. The turbidity on Water Plant Number Two, the range for turbidity should be point zero eight, and rather than point one nine, it should be point two one. As noted from the, the date of, second from what I'm there, December thirtieth, being point two one.
So just the, they were obviously.
The range was not right?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's just a change in the.
So you're making amendment to the report?
Correct.
We'll just update that top page.
They'll just update the report?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, update the report.
Yeah, yeah, so it doesn't have to change the motion at all?
No.
It's just to reflect those numbers. Um, I do have an, actually, a question. Um, with this year, I, when you, when you look at those turbidity ranges, this year, obviously, for two plants that are side by side, um, there is actually quite a big difference, you know, between, let's say, point three one to even point two one. Um, I'm wondering, um, is that normal? I mean, like, there again, like, the water supply would be, you know, like, very close in terms of traveling all over the same lines to there. So I, so I don't know why there's, let's say, such a large range between those two.
I don't know off the top of my head why, I can definitely inquire. Um, I do know, obviously, that everything's within kind of safe operating ranges, for sure, but, um, by all means, I'll check into that tomorrow morning and send an email out.
That's my own question.
Okay, anything else? All in favor? Moving down for accounts for approval, motion, please. Counsel Beck?
Yes, I'd like to, um, to approve the city council as presented by checks numbered two one seven five eight to check two two zero three zero for the total amount of nine hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents, and the payroll vouchers numbered one zero zero four eight to one zero one six five, the in the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents for January thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Do we have a secondary? Counselor Schramm? Any questions there? Okay, all in favor? And a motion to adjourn? Counselor Jones? Secondary? Oops, sorry, you had the motion first. I just jumped over, that's why.
A motion to adjourn January thirteenth, twenty twenty, regular meeting.
Secondary? Counselor Tully? All in favor? Okay, thank you.